Okay, my clock says four, four o'clock, so we have a quorum, so I will call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes from our four, six, twenty, twenty-one regular meeting? Were there any questions or comments or corrections regarding the minutes? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilman Gerring, do you want a second, Councilman McCarty?
Yes, I will.
Okay, second by Councilman McCarty, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three oh. We'll now move on to agenda item C, approval of vouchers. Today we have manual checks in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars, eighty-six cents, and computer checks in the amount of one hundred seventy-nine thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollars, forty-nine cents, for a total voucher approval of two hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars, thirty-five cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the vouchers for payment.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman McCarty moves.
Second.
Councilman Lowen, seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three oh. We are now into our public comment section, item D, do we have any members of the public, Mr. Styles?
I do not have anybody from the public on Zoom, other than our newspaper representatives.
Let's give it just a minute here and see if anybody joins us or wants to join.
Do we need?
I don't have a.
I mean. Okay, and then did you want us to give an update during that public comment section on projects?
Yes, please.
Okay, then we'll do that.
Update on the, on the hike and bike trail.
They will come up there so they can.
So you can grab it here. Tell us who you are.
Yeah, I know, it's right there.
It's a little. I'm Zach with EBH, I'm the inspector for the hike and bike trail right now. Right now, we're about thirteen hundred feet short of coming to Adams Street right now. They've been making good progress important about every other day or something like that, about five hundred feet, so they're making good progress, obviously today, not a lot of progress going on out there.
Right.
Once that job finishes, we're gonna move up and we'll do the, the highway job with the, with the turn lanes there at the hospital of industrial and US fifty-six. They want to start that job on May third, that will, that's when traffic control will be shut up, that shown, set up. That will shut down the industrial intersection into the hospital there. We've already been in touch with Travis Parmley, the EMS director for the county. I've talked to Marion County Dispatch, and I've got a voicemail in with Mark Rooker, the CEO of the hospital right now. And then that will start, they'll set that traffic control up that Monday, and then you'll start seeing dirt work on probably Tuesday or Wednesday, it sounds like.
So is there, so all entrance and egress and ingress to the hospital will be from the south on industrial road?
Correct, yes.
Not off of fifty-six?
That's correct, yeah. We expect that to be.
If somebody had to, they could still get in through the industrial part.
Right.
If, if somebody forgot or like EMS purposes, they could come in through the industrial park and wrap back around.
Got it.
But everything.
That's not, you know, that's not a paved.
No, no, I understand.
Way, so it's not gonna be a primary by any means.
Understood.
We expect that to be shut for somewhere between five and six weeks, and then we'll jump over to the north side. And again, that information has all been relayed to EMS hospital, and we'll be keeping in touch with them throughout to keep them updated on when that's gonna be opening back up, so, so that they're aware of that.
Very good, I actually had a member of the public contact me this, this week and ask when the project was gonna be started, somebody that lives in Hillsborough, works in Marion, and was concerned about the slow traffic or people waiting to the last second to make, indicate their, their slowdown and turn onto industrial road, so. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
And that's Zach Collett with EBH Engineering, for the record. Okay, do we have any other comments that we want to make at this time? Any other public, members of the public?
Nope, we have nobody on there from the public.
All right, we will move on into our business section of our meeting. Agenda item E one, which is ordinance thirteen thirty, utility deposits and reconnection fees, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir, so one of the issues, we, we've just finished our, our audit recently, and one of the issues we've struggled with for numerous years is the utility deposit system. Right now, a customer who cannot produce a letter of credit from previous utility that they've had for the last twelve months, has to post a hundred and twenty-five dollar deposit, we hold that deposit for a year until, or until they discontinue service with us, and then those deposits are refunded, they're credited back to the bill with the interest earned at the end of the year. You know, this, the idea there is that if someone doesn't have the, the proper credit history, that, that, that kind of secures their, their service against them leaving town without paying it. It seems relatively simple, but the bookkeeping for this has created quite a nightmare for us, it creates a lot of issues, and it, the part of the reason is that it never, it never balances out because state statute requires that the city pay a set amount of interest, which is different than what we actually earn on it, a lot of the times, it's controlled by the Kansas Corporation Commission, and so it's a situation where we're told we have to provide them one thing, and yet we can't get that on our own accounts, and so it creates a little bit of an issue for us. And after, you know, years of having that, it kind of multiplies up and adds up to a little bit more interest in what really is, is manageable. So what we've suggested, and talked with the auditors about it, and they supported it, was moving away from the deposit structure and moving to just a connection fee. So what we would propose, and what this ordinance would do, is do away with the utility deposits and put on a, a flat fifty-dollar connection fee, we would still waive that fee if we could find, if someone could produce a letter of credit for it, so it wouldn't be like we would be charging everybody that. So we'd use that same, same procedure that we have here, except that the fifty dollars becomes non-refundable versus the hundred and twenty-five, which is refundable through the deposit system, so it's actually a pretty common change, we did a little bit of research and found that, you know, we tried to pull some comparable, comparable communities, Marion, we always look at Marion and Peabody, and they've gone away from the deposit and have gone to a similar system, Marion charges a hundred and twenty-five dollars still, or that's just a flat fee that's not refunded, or they, they will take a letter of credit, Peabody has gone to just a fifty-dollar fee for everybody, no, no refunds. There are still a few folks out there who do deposits, City of Norton is one that's roughly the same size as us, and they do a hundred, a two-hundred-and-ten-dollar deposit, so their deposit's a lot larger, and then we found a few that go all the way up, like Garnet, City of Garnet, which is roughly the same size, it's a little bigger than us, but it's three hundred and fifty dollars for their deposit, so we're, we feel pretty comfortable that the fifty-dollar correction fee is, is pretty reasonable, again, it'll be waived if there's somebody has a letter of credit, and so that, what we would do is, if you would approve that ordinance, it would, it would get rid of the, the deposit system and move to that fee, there's also another fee in there that we wanted to address, it's in the same ordinance, so we decided to, to put it in there too. It's also the reconnection fees, right now, our reconnection fee is ten dollars during business hours and twenty-five dollars after business hours, and that doesn't really cover our costs to go do that, especially the after hours, it doesn't cover our, our time. Whenever we call somebody out after hours, there's a two-hour call-out period, the cost starts to add up, so we went and looked at that too, as far as what other people are doing, fifty dollars seems to be pretty well in line, City of Marion does the same thing, Peabody, Norton, again, theirs is, they have a twenty dollar for the first time, and it multiplies up as you go further out, so we felt like the fifty-dollar fee would be, would be fair regardless of the time it takes, if we do it during business hours or outside of business hours, so, you know, on a given, given billing cycle, we, we average about ten to fifteen disconnects a month, and generally speaking, we're about three to five of those people are disconnected after hours and have to be reconnected after hours or the next day, so. We want to address that fee while we had the opportunity, when this, we were, you know, changing this ordinance, so that would be, this ordinance gets rid of the, the deposit structure, goes to a fifty-dollar flat connection fee that can be waived with a letter of credit, and also changes our current reconnection fee from ten dollars during business hours and twenty-five dollars after hours to just a flat fifty dollars regardless of the time when we do it, so that would be what we're proposing with the ordinance, and I would need a second action, if you were to approve that, we would need a second action for us to take and, take whatever we have in the deposits and apply those to the next billing cycle that we would have available, which would probably be the June cycle. So, lots to unpack there, be happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of what we're, what we're suggesting with this ordinance.
Okay, are there any questions? I can tell you that those are checks that the mayor has to sign, and there are many, many times where those checks are less than twenty dollars, so the cost of, you know, producing a check and writing it, having it go through the system, you know, it just, it just, that's one of those that certainly has kind of made me shake my head, you know, and wonder why we're doing this, so it seems to me this is a much cleaner way of, of dealing with it, and what Mr. Styles has proposed to me seems pretty fair, you know, in terms of how, how it's being, gonna be applied to the public, and you know, if you've got that letter of credit, you don't, you won't even have to, that'll be waived.
Yeah, it would be waived, correct.
So, and unfortunately, for those that have trouble paying and, and do leave the system, you know, owing money, to be honest, the majority are, are good, a good number of those, the deposit doesn't cover the bill.
Doesn't usually cover the.
So, you know, and, you know, what, what the function of it is, and again, the, the counting nightmares that it, that creates, it just seems to me like this would be a lot smoother way to go and, and streamline our operations inside City Hall. Any other comments or questions?
Reconnection fee, is that for any kind of reconnection, or is that just for this?
Yeah, if we've had to go out and disconnect it, the reconnection is for that.
But are, are you asking about other utilities?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, all those other things, yeah.
Yeah, we usually generally, you know, it's usually electric.
Seasonal business, so I have to reconnect it every, every year.
Oh, yeah, no, that's not how that, no, no, we don't, we don't charge it on the same thing.
Okay.
So, yeah. If it's, if it's a planned thing, it becomes a, a little different deal, but if it's a failure to pay thing, then yes, there's a fee.
All right, so just bear that in mind.
I will bear that in mind, I, I've heard it from you.
Pay your bill, no problems.
All right, so any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve ordinance thirteen thirty for utility deposits and reconnection fees and authorize the mayor to sign.
I move that we, I'll make that motion.
Okay, the motion is made by Councilman Lowen, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilman McCarty seconds the motion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council, Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Councilman Gerring? Motion carries three zero, and now we'll need to address the secondary action, which is if ordinance thirteen thirty is approved, that we authorize city staff to return all currently held deposits to account holders at the next available billing. Would somebody, are there any questions regarding that? Hearing none, if somebody would care to make a motion for that action?
How about that motion?
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen, seconds. On this action, I don't believe we need a, a, to poll the council, so we'll have a voice vote, all those in favor of that action signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Councilman Gerring, did you say aye? I'm, okay, motion carries three zero, and we'll now move on to item E two, resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh four, setting public hearing for countryside fee, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir, so this is ratifying our decision to hold the public hearing for the countryside tax abatement on next Tuesday, the twenty-seventh at four P M, so this basically is just ratifying that, we've already done everything we need to, to properly call a special meeting, but we have to ratify this with the resolution.
Okay, are there any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion that we approve or adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh four, setting public hearing for countryside feed for next Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, at four P M, somebody care to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Lowen moves, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilman McCarty, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council, Councilman Gerring?
Yes.
Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three zero. Now move on to agenda item E three, recommendation on city engineering services, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir, so staff interviewed four engineering firms on the thirteenth, we had Ben Steckety, the building inspector and, and fire chief, Morgan Marler, our water and sewer person, Dale Dahl, heater street person, and Todd Homer, who's in charge of electric, and myself, so we all, we had firms from, mostly firms from Wichita, and then EBH, and we're, you know, pleased to recommend, pursue an agreement with EBH for one year to, to look at city engineering services, we've had a really successful relationship, long-term relationship with EBH over twenty years, I've had, had some issues in the past, and I think everybody's kind of acknowledged those, and they've, EBH has proposed some changes to the current operations, and I think that that'll significantly improve kind of the relationship and make sure the communication stays good, and we're all accountable to one another, and that includes, that includes the city being accountable to EBH too, and there's, there's some issues with that too, as far as making sure that everybody's talking to one another, and so that, that is our proposal, and I know Darren's here and, and Zach are both here for the EBH, and I don't know what y'all wanna, if you want to add something to the conversation with that, or?
I must get any other questions, so.
Okay, so what we would propose is having an on-call relationship, so that's, that's a non-retainer relationship, but we have a, a basically an agreed-upon set of charges or fees that we would charge for, for work, and then we would give projects to EBH when they, when they come up, so this should be for one year, so that we can kind of evaluate, we'll, we'll evaluate after one year and then, you know, have some kind of, or reoccurring, re-upping kind of language in the, in the agreement, so we would have, EBH provided us with a draft services agreement, but we'd like to have Kimberly take a look at it and make sure that it, it meets, meets the needs that we have with it, so that would be kind of where we're at, and what we would recommend, the action to take would be to direct Kimberly, the city attorney, to, to look at the, or draft a one-year-on-call engineering services agreement between EBH and the city for presentation at a, a later council meeting.
So, just to be clear, this is a different, this is, this is something, or I guess I would call it an enhanced relationship that we would have with EBH that we haven't had, it would be documenting that relationship a little more formally.
Formalizing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they've served, you know, as sort of the de facto city engineer for twenty years, but never, never like officially serving in that capacity, it's, it's obviously pretty simple, because they're right here and, and they have an office here in Hillsborough and one in Marion, so I think that's, this, this changes that to a more formalized relationship, sets up what I, I like to call guardrails and kind of some ideas and some accountability structures and things like that, so that we can, you know, continue to be successful and move forward and, and complete more, hopefully many more projects together, so.
Are there any questions for Mr. Styles?
So do we need to move on this recommendation, is that the point?
We, we, we will.
Okay.
So would somebody care to, to, what the motion would be is to direct the city attorney to draft a one-year-on-call engineering services agreement between EBH and the city, that's the motion that's, would be in front of us, would somebody care to make that motion?
I will.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries three zero, and I'd just like to add one thing, I am extremely appreciative of the relationship that we've enjoyed with AB, EBH, and I am very excited about formalizing that, you know, I know that there have, we both faced challenges over the last several years, you know, and a lot of them, you know, revolve around getting enough qualified people and, and enough hours in the day, and just a lot of projects going on, because obviously EBH serves other communities in, in the area, not, not the least of which is our neighbors to the east here in Marion, so, but that said, you know, we have a responsibility, obviously, to the citizens of our community, to make sure that projects that we undertake are done in the most fiscally responsible way, and also in a timely manner and an accurate manner, and so I'm very excited about this, and Darren, and, and look forward to many more years.
Us too, thank you.
All right.
And I know Kimberly, I know you probably can't see me, but I hope you can hear me, if you have that draft and you have anything on it that you want to discuss, if Matt's okay with it, please feel free just to contact me either by email or phone, if there's, you know, items on there that, of ours that you want to either revise or tweak or throw out, just let us know.
Okay, great, thank you.
We're very minimal to, however you guys want to structure that part of the contract, all the fine print stuff, so that was just a template that we put together based on a lot of our other general contracts.
Okay, well, I'll take a look at it, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to agenda item E four, we have a couple invoices from Elcon Services, one in the amount of six hundred twenty-nine dollars and four cents, the second in the amount of six hundred and thirty-five dollars, ninety-five cents, the total of the two invoices, twelve hundred sixty-four dollars, ninety-nine cents, Mr. Styles?
Yes, sir, so Elcon came out and helped us, these are both for water things, we've put some new turbid, turbid, I can never say it, turbidity meters in, which they, they measure the, basically the cloudiness of the water and how it settles out, so I had a little bit of, I needed a little bit of help with that to, to do in some install there, and then we also had them working on a flow meter repair at the water treatment plant, and we also had a transducer adjustment that we needed, that we found out after the big polar vortex, or whatever we're calling it, with the weather, had an issue with one of the transducers, and so they had to come out and help us dial that in a little bit and get it more accurate, so both of them totaled up to, what was on there, one thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Okay, we have these two invoices in front of us, is there a motion to approve them for payment?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Councilman Lowen moves.
He's second.
Councilman McCarty, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All those abstaining?
Abstained.
Motion carries. So these invoices are approved for payment. We now are moving on to agenda item E five, which Mr. Styles is getting us ready for, which is our presentation of our Community Plaza master plan, Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir, happy to show what we've been working on with this, it's pretty, I think it came out pretty well, I'm gonna do a screen share so y'all can kind of take a look at it and see it, so this is our community master plan, or Community Plaza master plan, we were working with L K Architecture, let's see if I can get that just a hair bigger. Okay, there we go, with our community, the group that's been working on it, that has done it, I've, I'm calling them a committee, I'm not sure if they would go with that or not, but that's, that's sort of what they are, and so we've been working with them, and this is, this is the roots of that labor, so there's a couple things in here about, I can't move my slide here, need to get to the controls a little bit better here, sorry. There's some things about sort of the philosophy of doing this, we used place-making, which is the idea that you can connect people and strengthen them by having opportunities to gather together, so it uses some of these place-making ideas of social ability, access, comfort and image, and then activity, so there's things that kind of work together to create spaces where lots of energy can happen, lots of cool stuff that, that builds community can occur in this area, so that was sort of the philosophy in putting it together, the, the approach and, with this is it's obviously been a community-based project, so we've had a lot of people put a lot of hard work and effort into raising the money and coming up with the ideas for this project, and so what we want to do is continue leveraging some of that local talent and support and sweat equity frankly in a couple areas, to, to make sure that we can have something that's successful, that it really expresses the community's vision and has community buy-in, I think that's a really important piece for any project, but I think we'll be really successful with this space if everyone kind of makes it their own and takes a little bit ownership with it, so what we've come out with conceptually is, is to take this space, and we've, we've talked about it several different times, and I've got some better aerials of it, so this is kind of the initial overall master plan, it's got some, some really cool elements to it, the biggest element, the thing that was kind of the focal point of what we wanted to start with was this splash pad, and then we've added a natural playground structure, which you can kind of see, I don't know if my, my cursor will show up quite right, but this is kind of a natural playground structure, so it has things to climb on, netting, log-type activity things, it's really designed to be something that is engaging for kids at any level, and if you've ever had a kid, I've got two, that will literally play on anything, but if they, they like climbing on stuff, and, you know, so this would use boulders and kind of natural things that are low maintenance to, to create a play space in there too, we've also got a stage structure, which would be on one of the others, later stages, so, you know, it's got this stage structure with a built-in audio, and it's got a, a giant display monitor on the top so that we could show events, if we wanted to live stream, say, you know, Trojan, Trojan games or Tabor games, we could do that there, that space, and it's also, you know, rentable, they've, they've factored in or had, had the idea to put concessions, the potential for concessions in one of these areas, these roll-up doors, which I think would be kind of a cool idea to, to make that a more flexible space, if you want to go over on to this side, this is part of phase one, which would be the restrooms and the controller structure for the spray park, but it'd have a kind of a decking on it, they use storage containers is kind of the building blocks for this, so low maintenance, fairly low cost, and can be dressed up fairly well, gives it kind of a modern look, they've, they've really leaned into, at least the, the architecture firm has leaned into kind of this honeycomb look, which ties back to our, our community's history with, you know, barkman honey, we've got a lot of beekeepers in the area, it's actually kind of an under, undersold piece of Hillsborough that we don't really talk about as much as maybe we could, so it's one of those things that they've kind of included that into the design, and then they've got a, a parking area back here, but they've shown food trucks in there, so if we had events, we could have food trucks come in and park there, and that, we, we kept the existing trees, so there's a sycamore tree and an elm tree, and so those stay as part of this project, we'd have this open lawn area, and you can't really tell from this shot, but it's got a berm, and I've got a couple other, other shots that sort of show that, so it creates kind of a natural amphitheater look through landscaping, and they also have a, a fire pit feature right here, which would be kind of incorporated into this with the decking that goes around it, now with fire pits, you gotta be a little bit careful, so there's some control things in there we have to think about, but still, I think it, it creates kind of this inviting space, so the parents can be, you know, enjoying other, other parents' company, while kids maybe play in the spray park, or you could take in a show, whatever, whatever's going on, it's got these roll-up doors, which are designed for different structure, or different uses, you can either rent them out, or we. uh, uses. You can either rent them out or, uh, we talked about maybe having a, uh, pop-up shop for somebody. If somebody wants to set up a, a stand for something or wants to sell something that day, they could rent that space and, you know, be part of that event. So, uh, we've got a few other pictures of it. This is kind of the entry point. Uh, this is looking from Washington and, or Washington and A Street over here, uh, looking directly in. So we've got some landscaping features here. We used all-natural native grass, which is super low maintenance. That was, that was one of our big things is we gotta have it to be fairly low maintenance. Um, we've got this pergola kind of structure with some porch swings as, as seating option for this. You can kind of see on this, we'll get a better look at these sites here, but they've got Hillsborough on there on the side here. Uh, and then they've got this sitting wall, which is, is a way to kind of break the space up, but also give people an option to sit. Um, and obviously you can sit either way. Uh, here's, here's a better kind of look at what they talked about with the spray park. So we had a kind of a subcommittee, a group of, of people who work with spray parks pretty regularly, help kind of design these features. And I'm not sure that the visuals are quite a hundred percent right with the architecture, what they put in here, the architect firm, but, uh, the design was set up to where it would be, um, including, you know, inclusive of a lot of different ages. So you've got things like cannons in the south corner here, uh, that are more for older kids. And they've got, of course, the big dumping bucket and some lower, smaller stuff for smaller kids that are kind of out of the way. Uh, we've also got this long kind of, I don't know what you call this, like a hoop structure since you can run through. Uh, the green marking there is just kind of shows the splash zone that's needed for these things, but it doesn't, it wouldn't actually be on there. It's kind of like the, uh, first down marker in a football game.
Yeah.
It shows up, but it, it's not, um, not actually out there. Um, so that's kind of the, the spray park feature of it. Uh, and we've actually gotten some of these pieces, some of the fixtures donated and the controller donated as, as one of the members of the group has, has a connection to one of the spray park things, uh, spray park companies. And this is kind of a side view coming off of, of A Street to looking at the pavilion. So they've, what they've done is taken that honeycomb thing and put Hillsborough, you know, kind of on there. And they've got some decorative lattice stuff on the sides to kind of dress it up. And there's the ADA ramp that gets up onto the decking, uh, so that it's accessible by everybody. Uh, they're showing some bike, bike features here. We probably have bike parking, but we'd also want to be able to include a electric vehicle charging station. That's something that KPP was wanting to, would allow us to do here. So, uh, we talked about that with them. And originally we actually had solar panels included in this project, but the way that they ended up being wind rated and everything, it, it didn't quite work. So we were looking for other locations for that. So it's got second level here and the, they, these can be rented out or, you know, used for storage. Um, so there's some opportunities there with that. You can kind of see some tables. I don't know if the next picture's got a little bit better view. Okay, so this is the, the pavilion area here and we've got the, of course, the fire pit and these roll-up doors, which are the rental spaces or the, the flexible spaces. Bathrooms would be in here, um, so they would be part of this shipping container. And then we've got kind of flexible seating that you can move around. That's, that's another key piece to this. Um, and the, the final design has this being, uh, that strict, uh, street brick, leftover street brick that we had from the project over on Grand Street. So I talked with Dale. I'm not sure we'll have quiet enough with that, but, uh, we, the idea was to try to be as sustainable as possible and use materials that we have. Um, and I think that kind of, that's a cool way to sort of tie in that project too with this and, uh, really connect it into the community. And here is a look of the, kind of the green space area. This is that berm that we were talking about, uh, to kind of create that natural amphitheater flow. And so we've got the pavilion there and it ties back into the natural playground, which is over here in the spray park over there. And then, um, it actually works as a way to, to not necessarily hide, but to hide, I guess, basically the TC Wireless Central Office Building, which is over on this side. So as a potential concession state space here, uh, rentable and lots of storage space, obviously inside the container. So there's kind of another view of that. You can see how it works as it walks through. I think that's a really, I, that's one of my favorite elements to this. I think we could really draw people in. You can see a lot of different uses for programming-wise for a stage area. Uh, of course you can show sports and, you know, we can have parties out there on the lawn and it would be a really great gathering point, I think, for people and a way to get people into that downtown area. So this is kind of an overview of phase one of what that would look like. So the stage is not part of that and the natural playground isn't part of that. And this section right here isn't necessarily part of it either. So, um, the main pieces with it are, you know, doing this berm, having the spray park and then the bathrooms and control section, along with this area, which they're kind of proposing, as they call it, the food court. They're proposing that to be a rock kind of base right now until the next piece could be put in and then the pavers, uh, the brick could be put into there. So, uh, and this, this whole section back here becomes parking until, uh, such point as the stage would come in. So, um, that's kind of the idea with the first phase and there's a couple of other views of it. So then we would have the ADA ramp going up onto the decking. Uh, they didn't do the full-on tricked-out version of, of Hillsborough on the side there because you wouldn't have the whole thing on there. Um, it would be potentially an opportunity to, to engage with either, you know, high school or the college, uh, to, to help decorate those. I mean, you could, that could easily be the home of a mural, um, if we wanted to do something like that. Uh, and these are flexible spaces here so that you can move these things around. You can kind of see a little bit better on this side. So that's, that's kind of the, the approach to that. Uh, so that's what phase one would look like. And right now, kind of how we're looking at this, at our next steps, uh, our, our committee is going to continue working on the project, providing input. We're especially going to tap into our folks who have expertise with the spray park. Um, going to have them help us, uh, do a lot of this stuff. Uh, and we're also going to look at fundraising for the next phase. So the city right now, we're going to kind of go for it for three different angles. So EBH is, I talked with them a little bit about helping us with some project management. Uh, we're going to have a meeting with our staff to kind of determine what our internal plan is going to be. Uh, there's a lot of the work here that we can do ourselves. Um, we've worked on a couple of different spray park projects, uh, in and around them. And generally speaking, they're not super difficult and, and I have pretty high confidence in our crews that we'd be able to, to be able to put in a spray park piece with the right guidance from the spray park company. And then EBH's help on kind of structuring how that work needs to happen. Uh, we'd want to secure the, the splash park equipment in, in installing and getting all the specs for that. Generally speaking, when you buy the spray park equipment, they do a pretty good job of giving you the layout and the structural things, basically the plans, uh, to put the thing in. So that's, that's a pretty important piece there. And then we're also going to be working to get our, our architectural specs for the container building. So in our building code, the shipping containers actually fall under a, a different alternative construction material. Uh, and so Ben, our, our city inspector, rightfully so, won't let us just put one up until we have, uh, architectural approval on how to do that appropriately so that it's safe for everybody. And, um, so we're going to have to work with an architect to kind of get that. And we've actually talked about using the shipping containers in other areas of the city too. You know, specifically out on, on Memorial Park and maybe looking at, uh, the rates for the bathrooms and concession there. So, um, so the timeline for this is we're going to have our internal discussion, complete that by May and then begin the work on getting the splash park equipment. The plan there is to have it in between May and July. The way shipping has been lately, I'm not sure what we, what we're going to get, but we're going to start working with them as soon as we can. And then we'll also get with the architectural firm, probably use LK because they have somebody on staff, uh, that has a little bit of experience working with the containers. Uh, we'll get that done in, in the early parts of, of the summer as well. So the idea here is our tentative phase one completion is sometime in late summer. So I'm looking at probably the later part of August, maybe the first part of September. The idea being that we would hopefully be able to spray some water yet this year. Typically you shut these things down after school starts because your, your audience tends to, tends to go away. Uh, but I, you know, I think if the weather is warm, we've got enough of smaller kids, non-school kids around that we can keep it open a little longer. Uh, I think the excitement of having something new will, will really get people in there. So, uh, you may be asking, what's the cost for this? Well, the cost for phase one, according to the engineer or the architectural estimate is three hundred and fifty-five thousand. That is the turnkey price if you were to have, uh, a contractor do everything. And so once we've started digging in and on our internal plan of, of what we can do and what we feel like we, we can do, I think we can get those numbers down quite a bit, uh, because there's a lot of labor tied up in some of those things. And, um, I think we, we've got the in-kind to kind of do that. Uh, the total project, as it was pictured, they have an estimate of eight hundred and eighty-two thousand. So, um, you know, we will have to look at the future phases and kind of how fundraising comes in and look at those two as far as what we can do, kind of an in-kind sort of situation. So, uh, I think that with the money we have raised, we're over a hundred and fifty thousand in cash that's been raised for, for the project by the committee. Uh, I think that we'll probably be, have sufficient resources to do phase one. And that would include the city doing, doing some work. Obviously there's, there's an opportunity cost with that. We would be doing a lot of work and so other things may not, uh, get done quite as quickly as they normally would. But I think for this type of project, that makes a lot of sense. Uh, we're also looking for opportunities for the community to assist with some of these things. I think that there are. Uh, we've had lots of, lots of offers to donate labor and, uh, you know, that's, that's always a, a good thing. I think again, that goes back to that ownership idea of being able to own this as a community project. So, um, that is kind of where we're at and love, I'm really excited about the project. I think it's come together. It looks really cool. It's a little bit more modern than we probably, uh, you know, have, have done in the past here in Hillsborough, but I think it really embraces some of the sustainability elements. And I think it, uh, tries, tries to be as cost-conscious as possible, uh, while still creating a really cool, really cool space for the community to gather in. So I'd happily answer any questions. I've been talking for a little bit of a while.
Any questions from Mr. Styles? I can tell you that this project has been, uh, has been underway or, uh, you know, started a number of years ago. And to reiterate what, uh, Matt said earlier, there has been a ton of sweat equity, a ton of hard work in terms of fundraising that's gone on, you know, for this project. So, um, you know, so I want to thank the committee and, uh, in, in those folks especially that, that work so hard to get us to where we are today, that we're in a position to where we could, can really think and, and, and plan on phase one. And, uh, you know, it's, for me, it's easy to see how we can phase this on in, you know, with maybe a, a second and a third phase, the third phase maybe, you know, not sure which is good, which that would be, whether it be the, the kind of the kitchen and second story area element or would be the stage or in, in the multimedia screen. But that being said, I think it's an excellent place for the community to come together. And I think, you know, as we talk about the future, now that we're a gig city and, you know, we're spending a lot of, of our focus as city council on our strategic plan. I think this really dovetails well into the things that we're thinking about for, for the future. And, you know, we can't, uh, we can't ignore the past, nor should we, but we do have to be thinking about the future. And then there's so many elements of this that, uh, that to me, especially with the cost of billing materials these days, when you think about alternative methods such as shipping containers, you know, at first I kind of wondered about that. And the more I thought about it, the more, uh, the more I've embraced it and, and, and embrace it as, you know, on several levels, you know? One is as a cost-effective way to, to pull this project off, but also as a way that we're repurposing something, you know, into a community, uh, community space. And, uh, that goes right along with all the other elements that we've talked about. So excited, very excited about it. So again, any other comments, questions?
Looks like a neat place.
You can come down and do a pop-up igloo stand there.
Yeah, drive-in.
Yeah, drive-through.
Okay. Well, if that's, uh, if there are no further questions, we'll leave it there for now. And, uh, just encourage you, uh, Matt, to keep this project moving along because, uh, again, it's important. We've, we've made a lot of progress relative to kind of clearing the way or clearing the space, if you will, by removing the houses and the things that we've done to clean up that lot. But, you know, I think the public is ready to see some stakes in the ground and, and some construction and some things actually, you know, happening where we're building it back up. And so, you know, that's going to be very important that we do everything we can to keep, uh, to maintain the schedule that you've outlined here.
I think we'll make sure to give everybody a regular updates here at the council meeting and, uh, hopefully we'll see some things happening on the ground. We'll have to get all the, of the, of the fiber optic equipment off of there.
Right.
Been using that as a staging area, but, uh, and they, they should be wrapped up by the time we're ready to move in. So it should hopefully all work out just fine.
Right. Okay, we'll now move on to agenda item F, board appointments. I have one board appointment to make this, this afternoon. And that is, uh, I'd like to recommend that we reappoint Susan Watson to the library board. Susan is currently serving as president of that board and, uh, doing a great job. And, and she is, uh, excited to, uh, to continue her service. And so I put forward her name for, uh, for, uh, reappointment to the board. Would somebody care to make that motion? Okay, Councilman Garing moves. Second?
What second?
Councilman McCarty seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries three oh. Thank you very much. And now we will, uh, move on to, uh, city administrators report. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. Uh, so want to highlight our, our fiber optic project, uh, the light-up event we had on the eighth. I think that went pretty well. Uh, we didn't have as many people in attendance as maybe we'd hoped in person, but we actually did have really good, um, a lot of people were live streaming. We live streamed on Facebook, so a lot of people watching that way. And then we've seen, uh, had over, uh, twelve hundred views on Facebook too. So I feel like that's going pretty well. Uh, they're, they continue to move forward and installing. Uh, the project looks to get to, at, at conclusion sometime in the early summer, uh, which I think is a little bit, little bit, uh, longer than they originally anticipated, but the weather has been pretty interesting. Of course it snowed today, so I don't think they're out doing much boring today. You know, and I, I would also underline what, uh, the mayor said at the event, the future of Hillsborough starts today. I really feel like that's a, a really important idea here because I think this puts us, uh, head and shoulders above the, of the, of the competition as far as what, uh, what people are expecting in a small town. So, um, you know, the next thing with that is that we, we had a little bit of a scam alert. We wanted to make sure everybody understood. Uh, there was a couple of unidentified individuals that were going behind where the fiber optic was going in and trying to sign people up for fiber internet service. So if anybody comes to your house, just for residents, if they come to the house, they need to be aware that if it's from TCW, you will know it's from TCW because they will have their branded materials, their hat shirt. All their paperwork has their stuff on it. Their vehicles are identified with TSTC Wireless, uh, TCW stuff. So, uh, if you have those people come to your house, make sure that you, you observe the TCW logo and, and they're representing TCW. So, uh, I just want to make sure people are kind of in that mindset. It's, it's a shame that that happens sometimes, but that's, um, you know, we've, we've heard that. And so we want to make sure everybody's well aware that TC Wireless will let you know who they are. Pleased to have a health department collaboration. So the Marion County Health Department's got a lot of hand sanitizer and they've been giving away three and a half, three-point-three-ounce bottles of hand sanitizer. And we've got ten cases here and, uh, we've been handing them out to anybody who's interested. So if you need some hand sanitizer, come on in. It's part of the, I, I don't remember what they call it, Healthy Hands or something like that initiative to try to get people, make sure they, uh, take, take proper precautions, uh, to help keep COVID away. So, um, I'll, I'll get back to the KPP video here in a second. I want to play that for you. I think that really, um, KPP put together a video that explains, uh, what happened during the winter storm. And so we'll play that here at the end and we'll also link that over to the city's Facebook page. U.S. Government Class Projects, I think, uh, the ma- U.S. Government Class Projects, I think the mayor and Anthony Roy and myself have all presented to Mr. Canoll's senior government class. And they're working on projects to improve the community, a lot of different projects, a lot of cool projects. Some are probably a little bit more low-hanging fruit than others, but I think they're all really great and I'm always interested to hear what someone who, who's fairly young in the community wants to see because that helps us reframe our vision of what we should be doing. And so on May 5th, that we're going to have a panel that will hear these presentations. And I think the mayor is going to be on that panel too and Max Heinrichs, the superintendent, and myself. So we're, we're encouraging them and I encouraged all the classes when I gave my presentation to come to the city council and, you know, tell us what your project is and see if we can figure out a way to do it. So you may get some, you may get some high school seniors coming in here, which I think would be really cool. We don't, we don't get them in here very often, so I think it'd be really nice to have that. Community marketing plan, one of the other things that we're doing is, as part of our economic development kind of initiatives are pursuing a collaboration between all the entities in the community that really look, do some marketing or, or look outward. So we have Tabor, USD 410, the Chamber, the Museum, the CBB, Hillsborough Development Corporation and the city to kind of coordinate our messaging and strategy a little bit better. So we had a meeting last week and kind of walked through a SWOT analysis and I think it went really well. It was really positive. People are interested in working together. And so I think we've got some ideas that worked really well with what we've been talking about in our strategic planning. And so we're really happy and excited to, to have that going forward. And hopefully we have a, a meeting after our strategic planning committee meeting so that we can talk about, you know, what, what the next steps are for that. So then, of course, we talked about it a little bit. We're going to have that special meeting next week at four. First part of it is going to be the public hearing for the tax abatement for countryside. And then we're going to flip the, flip the switch and go into a, a work session for the strategic planning. So retirement party, we got Mona Heinz Retirement Party set for the Friday, April 30th from four to six here at City Hall. So you're more than welcome to come in and enjoy. I'm not, I can't remember what exactly Mona's got on her. I think she, her special request, I think was cookies. So we've got some cookies coming. That's going to be exciting. City Administrator 360 evaluation. I know it's kind of hard to believe, but we're coming close to being my first year here, finished on June 15th. It's crazy. It's going by. So what I'm wanting to do is a 360 performance evaluation. So normally you get a performance evaluation, it's usually just, would be the, the board here, you know, would be the, the city council. But I kind of want to do a 360, which would allow subordinates to give some feedback to. I think that can be really helpful. At least I, I feel like it can be helpful for me. It's also a little bit dangerous. You never know what people are going to say, but I'm, I'm okay with that. I think that most, I, I think everybody's going to be honest. So we'll be part of that. I'm looking to do that the first council meeting in May. So on May 4th, we'll get you that form, share it with you guys and then you will regroup after that, see if you have time to think about it. So vacation day, I'm going to be off on Friday, so I'll still be available if I phone or email if you need me. But doing a few things on this Friday. So now I want to play that video from Power Pool. Let me bring it up here. I'm going to need to do a share. Stop that right there. Hold on a second. Let's get it on the share. So I'm going to share this with you guys. You can. So this is Mark Chesney with Kansas Power Pool. Hopefully we've got sound. I can't hear it.
There's a, you know, that thing. Speakers turned on in here?
Should be. Oh, there we go. Okay, let's start again. Sorry about that. So that's a little bit of an educational piece on how, how that worked with KPP and kind of what has happened with that and, and how we got to the point where we are being charged for that additional surcharge. So I thought it was important to, to share that so that people can have a little bit of context with just how crazy things got in the market and what happened there. So we get a few questions about that, but I'm sure we will get more once the billing surcharge starts coming out in June. So we just want to get that out there so people kind of know. So that's all I had today, sir.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Stiles? Okay, it's now time for council comments and I'll just go around the room and then if there's anything you'd like to share with, with the group, Councilman Gearing?
I don't have any today.
Okay, Councilman McCarty?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Lowen? Okay, we have none. Is there any other business that needs to come before the city council? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.